Meeting on Finance and Law Subcommittee will come to order. Roll call, Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present. Going through the agenda, there are no student activity funds this week. Next item is bills payable in an amount of $1,296,901.76.
So moved.
Second on discussion.
Motion made and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate, I need to vote present on an item. Will it be done now and you'll just carry it over to the?
Yes.
Okay, so I respectfully ask to vote present on page 11. Voucher number, excuse me, voucher number 17190 in the amount of $999. Page 11.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll vote present on that item.
All right, any other discussion?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Next we have financial update on several special accounts and leave that to Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. So in your packet, we are providing you with the FY '22 financial update for quarter two, which will be July 1st through December 31st, 2021. So the first one is our line item appropriation. And if you're seeing there, again, you'll see what we are at on each line item, where we are with percentage expended. And then at the very, very bottom, as you will see, right now for the total budget, we are about 36% of our FY '22 at halfway point. So as you can tell by that percentage and all, that is a very good percentage where we should be or less than at halfway point. Now, as you do see that we do have some line items that are over expended and right now as of February 1st, we have frozen the budget. All of our principals and curriculum supervisors have been told that we have frozen the budget so we can go ahead and then see where we are to have all of our, all of our certain items encumbered. And then we would know better how we are in the budget for the FY '22. If we are going to have some type of a surplus, then we'll be able to prepay out of district tuitions and then, of course, purchasing any supplies for the next school year. And at that time, what we'll do during the freezing of the budget, we will also look to see, we'll be transferring, as you'll see there, charges to be transferred to Essar. Then we will be transferring some of these line items into grants, will then up, free up the appropriation, helping us having to offset other line items. And then, of course, like I said, to pre-buy any type of supplies and prepaying out of district tuitions. I'll go on to the next one unless you want any discussion on that.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the 35.95% is what we've expended so far. Why are we being cautious about freezing the budget? I mean, we're not even at 50%.
We usually do this at every time at this, during this year, at this time in the year. And what we try to do is to see, and it's not really the percentage wise, it's just to see where we are overall in the budget. And to see, do we, have we encumbered enough money in transportation? Have we encumbered enough money in our utilities going forward? Just to see if we, we want to make sure that everything that we are accounting for is going to be accounted. Now, again, if we say a frozen budget, if a principal does have something that they would like to purchase, they will fill out an unanticipated expense budget form and that will be reviewed by myself and then also the superintendent. So it doesn't mean that we won't spend any more money, we're just being to see where we are financially.
Okay.
And it's something that we do every year at this time.
Now, if you look at the figures, you see some of them are ahead of the pace of the year because obviously their different items are expended at different times of the year and sometimes you have to balance those things to be sure they're not out of hand.
Sure. Well, I would imagine that we want to do curriculum and stuff like that early on and not in May or June, right? I mean, so that makes sense.
Well, you may need to do it in May and June if you're buying something for the fall.
That's true too, but I mean, for this academic year. Thank you.
The next item that we are looking at is our revolving accounts. And again, this is for quarter two through December 31st. As you will see right now, currently with our revolving accounts, we have in our revenues of $5.2 million. These have been confirmed with our auditors and so as you see, our beginning in July, July 2021, and then, of course, what we've brought in as revenue and then our expenses. Please note that we do expect to have additional revenue going forward, which is our school choice funding that we get monthly. And it's an average is about $50,000 a month. So for the next, we haven't, I don't believe we've received the January amount, but we will do the January through June, which will be about $250,000 to $300,000 additional dollars for the revenue. So as you will see, we'll be, if it's just adding on to that amount, we'll be close to our $6 million worth of revenue. Any questions on the revolving account?
Looking good shape.
Our last one is our grants update. And as you can see here, it is where we are with our funding. Currently, we do bring in, we have currently as amount of $38, $38 million. And we are, per grant, we have encumbered funds per grant, so we know what we will be expending. And then remaining balances have been, we're trying to tie in our remaining balance. So then what we can check to see is taking any item from our appropriation that we will go ahead and charge now to, to grants. So right now, we're finishing those up. I do have some numbers here if you have any questions. But again, we have been working with our grant manager and making sure that we use our funding at the, to the appropriate times.
Mr. DeMello. I just wanted to emphasize that I think with, with this volume of grants, I see many names here that are doing triple, quadruple duty. And we mentioned a grant manager, but it's my understanding that grant manager is a part-time position? Okay. I, I think, I think moving forward, I don't know when we should bring this conversation up, but I think we need to explore a grant manager that would basically alleviate a lot of these names that are here to do the job that they're hired to do and not administer grants, because I think that's very critical.
Yeah, we, we had had one earlier and because of problems with the budget and also the way grants were going.
Right.
It was reduced to part-time, but it's nothing we haven't experienced or we haven't thought of.
I mean, it's just something I'd like to throw out there and, you know.
What we can do, Mr. DeMello, sorry, I wasn't called on, but what we can do is when we do our budget presentation, Mr. DeMello, we can build that into the budget if that comes out as a form of a motion, we can build it into the budget.
I think it's time for that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, motion be in order to receive and place these reports on file.
So moved.
Seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. And finally, Mrs. Moynihan, facilities update.
I was just notified that the doors have, will be arriving for the Taunton Alternative High School. So as soon as they arrive, we'll begin the installation of the doors at the school. And lastly, of course, I can't thank the city enough, Lopes Construction, and of course, our groundskeepers and our custodians and our storekeepers in helping us remove this huge amount of snow that we did receive in our, in all of our areas. And we did have to take the day off on Monday, but I promise you, they were working diligently to have our schools ready and open. So I thank everybody to having our schools ready to go on, on Tuesday morning. And of course, I can't, and again, our DPW who helped us out as well in securing Lopes Construction to bring in the big equipment for our complex of Taunton High School and Friedman or Oakland Complex. So thank you to everybody. And that is it.
All right, I don't think there needs to be any action taken on that.
Thank you.
Is there anything to come before us before the good of the order?
No, listen to John.
Seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Call the meeting to order if you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of conscience, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will lead us in prayer in a moment of silence.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, silence for Judith A. Lima, who started with the Taunton Public Schools as a secretary at Letty School in 1985 and served at the Pol School, which is where I met her when I was delivering mums for the teachers' union and she was a big help and just a very, very nice lady. She is one of the daughters of the late Aldutra, who was a member of the city council. And we want to wish, I'm sorry, just a couple of things here about her. She enjoyed watching the New England Patriots, the Boston Bruins, kept going, loved going to the beach, knitting and spending time with families and friends. She was kind and willing to help everyone in need. And so I'd like to ask that we all keep her family and her, her children in our thoughts and in our prayers and our sincere sympathies go out to Judith Lima. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
And on the roll call, Mayor, start. Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Enos.
Here.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
And Chairman DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Conne.
Present, thank you. Approval of the minutes of January 19th, 2022.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Mr. DeMello, public input?
Student advisory.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Student advisory first. And we have Hector Aponte here to deliver the report.
Hello, my name is Hector Aponte and I'm a senior at Taunton High School. So honestly, things are continuing in a good direction. The biggest change we've had so far is starting yesterday, every student is now wearing lanyards with their school ID. So I brought mine and hopefully I don't forget it for tomorrow. But it's basically just our standard ID on a lanyard so that we can be identified if we needed to, if we forgot a pass, we lost our pass. It just makes it a little bit easier on students. We can see each other's names if it's a new student we've never met before, stuff like that. On top of that, sports, continuing winter season, sports doing really good. The basketball team is excelling, they're continuing to excel. We had a couple of students today on National Signing Day, assigned to schools. So it's kind of good to see these kind of things going on and it's good, it's good just to know that students are excelling inside and outside the classroom. Second semester started, DECA is continuing our success. We had 43 competitors out of about 80 advanced onto the state conference, so that'd be in March. NHS is having their ceremony in April. For seniors, Mr. THS is also happening in March. And then another thing is that we've gotten some more security guards at Taunton High School. And I have to say that they've done a great job kind of assimilating into the culture. They introduce themselves, they kind of, for lack of better terms, fit into our student culture. They make jokes with us, they kind of, for me at least, it didn't seem like they're new teachers or security guards, it was kind of just like, oh, a new face. But we see them doing their jobs when they have to. So I'd say that's pretty good. And to wrap it up, as I'm kind of ending off my senior year, second semester, colleges, stuff like that, after being here for five years, I'd say that the atmosphere inside and outside the classroom is an A+. And it kind of makes me sad that I can't stay here longer because I kind of, kind of liking what they're doing at Taunton High, so nothing but good words.
Thank you, Hector, for a well-delivered report and I'm sure everyone's happy to hear that they're getting an A+ from our students. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to public input.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kind of request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. According to the regulation guidelines, will be provided upon sign-up, an individual will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Ms. Devine, do we have any public input tonight? Uh, Mr. Baran, I'm sorry, do we have any public input?
Yeah, good one, individual, I can inform Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, well, Mr. Vaughn, if you're in the audience, you can please step to the podium. Just to let you know, Mr. Vaughn, we don't comment on the public input, we refer to administration or whatever we have to do based on your comments tonight, okay? And please limit to about three to four minutes, thank you so much.
My press? Hello. Excuse my appearances, I came straight here from work to make sure that I'm here on time. My first time here, I never really done any of this stuff before. So my problem today was that my son had an issue at the school. We're new at Taunton. We just moved out here maybe, I want to say at least two, three months ago. We moved out like October, November, we moved out here. My son starts his school, very well, well-respected kid to everybody. Some kid decides to hit him. I teach my kids, if someone hits you, you strike back. Because I teach them to defend themselves against bullies or anyone that think that they're going to stop bullying them. We're not going to do that. That's what I teach in my household. And I teach them all this stuff when they're young. My son would get in the way if someone else is bullying someone. He has something to say, just like I do, I'm an outspoken person. And my motto was, he got suspended. The kid strike him, I don't like the double-edged sword, because how do I reward a kid that protected himself and he gets suspended for one day? Where is his reward at? Because he did not disturb, he did not deserve to stay home that day. He did not disturb, deserve to even feel that him protecting himself was not a reward. He has to protect himself. Everyone in here has to protect themselves from COVID and from harms way. That is something that we're all brought up with as children. And I also teach my kids, you keep your hand and your feet to yourself. You don't say disrespectful stuff to no one unless you're willing to stop the trouble and pay the price for whatever you're saying or whatever you're trying to start. My kids don't do any of that. All my kids went to school, they all graduated, went to college. I got a daughter in B.C. All my other kids tried college, they didn't like it, they left and started their own careers. He's 12, never been in trouble. You look, look his name up inside your records, never been in trouble. Only thing you could call me about my son every now and then is homework. And believe me, once I get that email, you best believe me, homework is done. That day, that weekend, don't care. But right now, I'm just, I can't have that suspension on his record for something that he didn't do. I can't allow that because he didn't do nothing wrong. He protected himself from a kid he don't know, he don't play with or anything. What made that kid want to hit him? As he says to me, he don't know why, because he don't play with that kid. He might play with some of the kids that he might play with, but I know him because I have an open table at my house. Did anybody know what an open table is? That's what I do at my house. You tell me what you think you did wrong, we address it and we take care of it as a unit and we resolve our issues. I cannot have that on his record, he's going to college. Can't have another kid take another good kid because that kid decided to be a jerky boy that day and take a good kid, hit him and have that kid again because of that kid's decision. That's not fair to me as a parent, it's not fair to that kid who think he's doing the right thing. Yes, he should tell the teacher, but at the same time, I get it. Staff is short sometime in some schools and I get it, there are a lot of kids and I get it, it's a rough day. Yes, I understand all this, but when it comes down to these kids and these problems, it should be more someone else in this hallway. Why did he stay home? Why don't you have in-house suspension? Why didn't you have a Saturday detention? Why didn't you even resolve it even better with all the parents sitting? Now, why don't you make a day for, here's that kid's mother and father to come, right along with my son's mother and father to come? So that we could resolve this issue, hear both sides. One reason why I'm saying I'm going to believe my son, we do open table. We don't got to lie. I'm there to help you, not be against you. Same thing I can always tell him, don't let no one bully you. I don't, I cannot go any deeper than that. We don't start trouble on the streets. We don't do anything that we're not supposed to do. We are a unit. I'm a unit with my unit, which is my household. When my child comes to school, my unit is gone, he's part of your unit. So when he comes a part of your unit and you're making these decisions like that, suspend the kid for one day, that protected himself, I still cannot get over that one part, that's, that's the only thing keep playing over in my head all the time right now. How do I get that off his record? He does not deserve that. He did not do anything wrong. Do I tell him not to protect himself? Now, with the kid, what if he did go try to find a teacher and the kid kept going behind and punching him, kicking him, hitting him? Then what would you say to me then? Oh, Mr. Vaughn, something else should have happened? No, we have to resolve this, yo. And I know and I'm pretty sure there's more kids going through this and they're scared to say something because they got good grades and they don't want to mess their grades up because they scared of the adults' decision. There's more termination on this. If the kid's an aggressor, I'm pretty sure he has more aggressive stuff on top of his files. A non-aggressive kid, you're going to see that he has a clean, clean file, clean slate and a well, well-respected in the school. Everyone loves this kid. How do I get this off his record? That's, that's all I need to know, because I can't, that's a double-edged sword to me. How do I tell him when and how to protect himself at a school? How do I tell him when and not to protect himself? I can't, it's, it's no such thing. My motto is, if you hit me, I'm hitting you back. That's just what my motto is. If I'm not touching you, do not touch me. If I don't play with you, you don't have to say anything to me. And that's his motto, he lives by that, even on the street in our neighborhood now. All the kids come knocking on my door, can put, his nickname is Putt, can Putt come outside? Can he come outside? No problems. This is the only school he been in and had a problem. I cannot let that be on his record. I'm sorry, I don't care if it's elementary school, middle school or high school. That suspension, I cannot have because he did nothing wrong. He protected himself. I need to know why he got suspended. I need to know why it wasn't done better than that. I need to know why, why would y'all not have an in-house suspension knowing that these parents have to go to work if that kid is wrong anyway? For the simple fact that if I don't go to work, that means I miss a day's pay. If I miss a day's pay, I can't come to the school committee or the school board or anything to do with the school and say, yo, I need my day's pay because I miss a day's pay because of your decision and you don't have a better protocol. I'm not saying your protocol is wrong, I'm not saying it's bad, but it's a double-edged sword. And as us as adults, we need to fine-line that one right there. Because it's not fair to the kid that's doing good for the bully to want to touch him and he can't do anything. No, that's, it's not fair. Now, we're all adults and we all have kids in here and I'm pretty sure. Reverse these roles. Let that be your kid that's very good in school and let that one kid decide to touch your kid. How would you feel if I called him and said, "Mr. Vaughn, your child is being suspended for protecting himself." Ah! How am I going to take that as a parent? You understand what I'm saying to you? How is he going to take that as a child, looking at me upset like, what did I do wrong? I did what you told me to do. I didn't do anything wrong. Why is the school suspending me?
Mr. Vaughn, for me to rub, it's my understanding that you have a meeting coming up this week with administration, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we, I understand you're frustrated and I just want to, you know, appreciate your time for coming here. We're listening and of course, administration will follow up with you this week at a meeting that's already predetermined.
No, no, absolutely. I just had to get this off my chest, because it's, I just feel for other kids that went through that. I feel for other kids that did graduate that went through that. And us as adults, they're not responding to any of these things any quicker than what it is and verify these certain things. Yes, it do take a student like this young man to come here, sit here and relate what's going on into the schools. I admire you for that, my man. Stay doing what you're doing, that's the best thing you could do, stay involved. Keep bringing in all your input for inside your school. Let us know what's going to make your school easier for you. It's not for us, your education's for you. When you go further, we go further. You're the next generation, you're changing the generation. I'm watching all these old Archie Bunker people that sat up here inside all our senates and all that stuff, getting washed away by your generation that's bringing in the new thing. Whether that is no racism, none of that stuff, because it's coming in better because y'all growing up in a better society than what we had in the 80s and 70s and 50s and 60s. And I admire your strength, young man. Stay on that route, please, very much, I admire it. And you need to speak out. I'm here because I think there should be a limit to bullying and how do we figure this out as a team? How do we come together as parents and as the board and as our community? How do we determine when and how to suspend these kids on these certain things? Because like I said, you might have suspended the wrong kid, it's not your fault because you only know what's being told. You're not knowing what you see or anything, you only know what you're hearing about. But at the end of the day, there's always two sides to the coin, there's always one side's right, one side's wrong. Us as adults, we have to look into these kids' history to really realize, is that the type of child that kid is or not? Because everything reflects back in the school, because if you act up one time in school, you might act up one time. We all did it, got in trouble, went home and we were straight. Went back to school, was quiet. Some kids would go home, get in trouble, go back to school and do the same thing again. So there's always going to be a little repeat of history somewhere in, inside the other person's record. I just don't believe a, a good kid just one day want to decide to do things. I don't really believe in that, but I do believe we need to come together, we need to figure this out. Because your kid's important, that young man's important and was making a difference and the difference that we make to show him will become better because he's going to know how to make it go up better. Because why? He's learning from us, just like I had to learn from my mother. My mother worked for the Boston School Committee. She worked with Mark Warburn's mother. I met new kids on the block, before there was new kids on the block. I watched them break dance and practice in the Madison School. That's where the first Boston School Committee was until they moved it to Milk Street, then they moved it to Court Street. So I've been around this. My mother fought for me in school at her age. When I went to the Tolen Elementary over by Mission Hill and when the school was crapped up, my mother went there, spoke up, cleaned that school, had me in the newspaper with an afro looking crazy with her and I'm not knowing what's going on, not knowing that what she is doing was very good. I was embarrassed because the kids teased me. But it was strong and I learned later on in life, I could do the same and I've been doing it.
Mr. Vaughn, thank you so much. Again, we are all listening and you're meeting with administration this week and if you're not satisfied, please reach out to me, I'd be happy to speak to you.
I'll just say, I just want to help, I just want to help the school out with this bullying, that's all. I just think every kid needs some adult around to help out with that one problem that's been going on. And I'm here for you. All you got to do is give me a call and give me a call.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Mayor?
Thank you. So we will move on to E, the turf field and track replacement update, and I believe Superintendent Cabral will kick that off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I know this is a presentation that the school board passed in present, is, has been eagerly awaiting. We got a little sidetracked because of COVID, but I'll ask Mrs. Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan, excuse me, to begin the presentation and welcome our guests who are here to present tonight the proposed turf and track replacement at Taunton High School. Mrs. Moynihan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Good evening, everyone. As Superintendent Cabral stated, we're going to introduce to you the team that has been working on the high school athletic complex. So during the 2019-2020 school year, Taunton Public Schools went ahead and hired Nezver So during the 2019-2020 school year, Taunton Public Schools went ahead and hired Nezra Engineering to engage Taunton Public Schools, a complete financial feasibility study of three key areas of the athletic field. Now, Nezra is not, um, a company that we have not used in the past. They have been very, um, very helpful with other projects, with the Taunton High School baseball field and, of course, the tennis courts. So he, um, Nezra is not, um, a stranger to Taunton. So what happened is in 2019 and 2020, Nezra went ahead and provided us with different feasibility studies for stages of replacements of the, the track and field and also the, um, football field at the stadium. Also, they did another schematic design for the softball fields with a multipurpose field in addition to a practice field out near William Street. Reason why we did that, and it's because, of course, to see how much money it would be and then how could Taunton Public Schools fund each and, each of the projects, or which project we could, could fund. But in COVID world hit and these projects were on hold. But, um, now, thank you to the school committee, they've asked to bring this back on, and here I am, very lucky to say that I have, I'm going to introduce you, um, interim principal, Taunton High School Principal Scott Holcomb, who will go ahead and speak to you about the project.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan. So, uh, A-plus, right? A-plus in the classroom, A-plus in the hallways. What we're about to see tonight is how A-plus goes beyond just the school building into our fields that our students use. So I want to say that I was pleasantly surprised tonight when I came in and saw somebody I consider to be a friend and someone I've worked with in North Attleboro, Arson Hambarzumian, who is the owner of Nezra Engineering Firm, who's going to be here tonight to bring you through the slides as to what happens here. Uh, I've seen them already, and it's a great time to be a student here at Taunton Public Schools. So, uh, Arson, why don't you come on up and lead us through the presentation? So without further ado, Arson, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Mr. Holcomb, Mrs. Moynihan, Madam Mayor, and members of the school committee. Thank you very much for hosting us.
You can feel free to take off your mask if you're comfortable with that.
I am, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, as stated, Nezra has, um, worked with the city of Taunton quite a bit, and, and we're very familiar with their facilities, especially as they relate to athletics. We've completed the study, the baseball field renovations, uh, the tennis court, and now we're on the, onto the next phase. Uh, we're very excited about this phase because, uh, we feel it's going to be a tremendous improvement. Uh, the facilities you have now are, are great facilities, and they've just outlasted, um, their lifespan. But typically, synthetic turf field is warranted about eight years, will last ten years, and through the great effort of, of your facilities and the maintenance, you've been able to increase the longevity of this facility to thirteen-plus years now. So that's very exciting, um, but it is, it is ready for an update, and the timing is great because there's a lot of improvements in the industry, a lot of changes and trends that we're able to capitalize on. Some of the improvements, uh, we're proposing for you is a new logo, paw prints for the directional arrows, some markings for the coaches' areas and the team players' areas. Uh, in addition to safety features, such as shock absorption system that would go underneath a synthetic turf field to protect against concussions and other potential serious injuries. For the track, the trend has been to have color transition zones, which distinguish the locations where the baton can be passed, and, um, using your school colors, I think we're able to accommodate that in a way that's very aesthetically pleasing. We're also proposing to put the long jump triple jump inside the new facility as opposed to having it further away. That way, the various track events can happen simultaneously, and you can be together, um, through the events. New lettering for the end zones, new striping, uh, new paved the area. There's a section of the D-area that's grass right now, we're proposing to pave that. That will limit the maintenance required for that area and also secure the safety of the track as you won't have equipment and machines crossing the new track surface. So it's down for two purposes, one for maintenance and then another to have additional space that you can utilize for events. We're proposing to have the football and the soccer field tufted in, which permanently encodes color fibers into the synthetic turf backing. That way, the lanes, lines, they, they're always crisp, and you don't have to paint and stripe and maintain those. Uh, but we're proposing the rest of it to be painted, that way it's not overpowering. The paint will wash off, and you can have your, the true colors for the football and soccer, and you can stripe the fields depending on the season they're in use, and then eventually they will fade away. General site improvements, we're also proposing a new scoreboard with an alternate for a video graphic system, flagpole monument area, sprucing up the side with some plantings, uh, general perimeter accessibility ADA improvements, and we're also evaluating the lighting system that's there. We've created a budget, uh, this was the budget previously approved. Um, we also had the estimates, uh, for the track, for, this is the field, was approximately one million, and the track was approximately seven hundred thousand. Due to the increase in time over the past two years with annual increase in cost and adjustment for inflation and COVID conditions, uh, we're estimating now to be approximately at the two million dollars, which is the approved budget for the project. Schedule, we have a fairly aggressive schedule. We've been moving on this project since we got the notice to proceed. Um, we intend to bid in February, uh, to initiate the bid so that the contractors can pick up the plans, documents, have time to review. We will reach out to, um, our list of contractors, preferred contractors, and invite them to attend. We'll facilitate a pre-bid, pre-bid for the project, and then we, um, intend to open the bid at the school, at the next school committee. Um, should there be many questions or anything related to the timeline? It, it may be the following school committee, but certainly within the next two, you know, March or April school committee, uh, the project will be out to bid. We don't anticipate any significant change orders, uh, due to the great effort and, and work provided to us by the building department and town facilities and the city themselves. You have great records of what has been constructed in the past, so we've used that information as our record mapping uh, to make sure our design considers all possible alternatives, so we're not expecting any significant changes. And that's, that's the gist of it. I would be happy to comment on anything or address any questions.
Derek, did you want to, I'm sorry, uh, did you want to go back, I'm sorry, Mr. George, did you want to go back to your microphone?
So I was wondering if you would be able to reuse the turf field that is currently there? Or would we be able to donate it? Is it safe enough to, like, give to a nonprofit organization or something?
So the fibers tend to delaminate and it starts to come apart, even, especially when you're ripping it out, it's very difficult. But what the, what most, what most, um, contractors will do is put it up online as an offer for any local entities or people who are interested in still salvaging, salvaging the material, and they will come take sections. We've seen people put it in their gyms, use it in their, you know, backyards and, and things like that. That's, that can certainly be either incorporated into the bid, that should be, you know, available to the community for anyone who wants to take it. Um, but it's also a benefit to the contractor because now he doesn't have to dispose of it.
Could we make a motion for that to occur?
Sure.
A motion to, um, bid out the turf field?
If I could, I guess if I could put a suggestion for the language would be to incorporate availability of the synthetic turf that's being removed to be utilized by parties interested in acquiring it as opposed to disposing it in the landfill, something like that.
So moved?
That's the motion, is there a second?
A second.
On discussion. Chairman.
So I, I, I think we're a little ahead of ourselves, and that's okay, I'm in favor. I, I just want to make sure there's no legal ramifications by giving away this turf that now it's not as, um, shock-absorbent as it should have been, and then there's some issues. So I just want to make sure we're protected, um, fully supported that, and I don't know what the next step would be, but I think that's a concern I have, and we should.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. I'll, I'll go around the table here. Uh, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is that something that could just be, um, resolved with a simple indemnification? Greg?
Sorry, adding up these numbers. I'm adding up the numbers. Well, I, I think, again, as long as we're protected, uh, I have no problem doing what, uh, Mr. George has suggested, absolutely. I think, yeah, a law, a law office that could tell us, absolutely.
Are, are you able to speak to that as well?
I think that's a valid point. Um, you know, I didn't really consider it, because in the past, what had happened is the contractor will be responsible for deciding, deciding how they dispose of the material. It, our language says that he, they're required to dispose of it legally and properly, and then if they choose to distribute that and, and give it to other people, they're the ones liable for it. So I, I would prefer to keep it that way if possible.
Let me go around, uh, Superintendent Cabral?
I would make a recommendation, maybe we refer this to administration to work with the city risk manager and possibly also reach out to the city solicitor or the school department attorney to make sure that we're not putting the school department or the city in any liable, uh, situation.
Just a question, uh?
Mr. Laura?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, you, you said that the allotted time for turf is approximately eight to ten years? And right now, how long has it been on there?
Thirteen plus, I believe.
About thirteen plus?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is it typical that other communities may try to sell that product to another entity, another?
They don't typically sell it. I think the offsetting cost for a contractor is to not pay to dispose of it.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Enos?
Uh, my question is to the engineer. Is the bid documents that are out right now, does it say that the contractor owns the material that they, they're?
So nothing has been published, we're, we're drafting that at the moment, but the intent would be that the contractor is responsible for the removal and proper legal disposal of the material.
Well, my question is, are they taking legal ownership of it? And I think that would solve our problem. If the contract states that, um, the contractor now owns that turf that's being removed, now it relieves us as the city?
That's the intent, but if we are to add language saying that he has to give it away, then we're forcing his hand and we take liability. In my opinion, I should say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Enos. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we'll find that the simplest way of dealing with the situation of, uh, potential liability is if, if we are advertising the availability of the turf, make it as this condition. So, uh, risk is assumed by the purchaser or acquirer. Then they know that they're assuming that condition.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Uh, so your company is, or your firm is creating the bid document, I understand? So, um, I think maybe we can stick with that motion, have the language inserted, and our law office can then review it to ensure that it, it, you know, suits our needs.
Yeah, I would be happy to work with your legal counsel or department to come up with the language that works.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor in a second? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Motion passes. We are, if anyone has any further questions, and then I think Mr. Otavio Nelly is, uh, also going to present. Okay, Mr. Malo?
Thank you, Mayor. So the whole all wax has gone up twenty percent, which is the two million and thirty-three thousand dollars, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Um, and this is based on going out in March or whatever day we chose to do this?
Mm-hmm.
And to be completed by, when, when is the completion date?
Um, I believe we're estimating three months, but it's June?
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth.
So it will be done by the end of summer, what's that?
Mm-hmm.
Before the end of summer, yes. Okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabral?
I would just ask Mr. Otavio Nelly to come up and add his comments on the athletic director and why he's excited about this project.
Thank you for having me today, and greatly appreciate it. We are very, very fortunate here in the city of Taunton, our students, our student athletes. This city, this committee, our school system, has, throughout my twenty years here, supported improvements throughout our district. The basketball upgrade on the floor, we have one of the best field houses probably in the state, if not the country, for a high school. Our tennis courts, our baseball field, the original turf and track at the stadium. The support of this community can't be expressed enough of how great it has been. Uh, not only in, and at our middle schools, uh, the Freedom Middle School, we've done improvements at Martin Middle School. There has been a continuous plan by this committee to improve our capital projects. And I'm just very, very grateful on behalf of our student athletes and our, in our community. Not only our student athletes, but our youth groups. We try to involve them as much as we possibly can in using our fields, and it's worked out very, very well. So I want to thank the committee for their support and the city, because it's been outstanding. Our plan in the spring, there might be a question on where, where are we going to play our outdoor sports? At the stadium, our track and field, we're going to have to go on the road, because we don't have anywhere else to go for our meets. We have five meets, our track and field, student athletes, we're going to have to compete at the opposing school sites. That's normal, in most cases, we, we would only have two home track meets. And in the wintertime, we are used to going out to Reggie Lewis, to Wheaton. Our track student athletes are used to going on the road. So for that one season, they'll be okay with it, especially if we get a beautiful track that we are planning to do. Uh, boys and girls lacrosse, we are going to, we've already, have already scheduled it with our oppo- opponents, had conversations with our baseball program, our staff, how we're going to share that baseball field. As you saw on the, Arson's presentation, football and soccer, we're going to be tufted in. Field hockey and lacrosse, we're going to be painted. So on our field, right now, on our baseball field, we have what's called tick marks, where it's measured out for each field, the soccer field, the field hockey field. We paint that now, our groundskeepers, Steven Green's done an excellent job, he paints those fields. We will be able to do that. We will do that with lacrosse this spring, so we will not lose any home games. Our student athletes will pla- participate and play their games at home, both boys and girls lacrosse. We're going to arrange the schedule, we're going to play at different times. It'll help in the officiating shortage, it'll help in with the buses and different things for different communities, because all the communities in our league are facing those same issues. So we'll be staying a little later and playing games like four-thirty, five o'clock, but we'll be able to play all our home games on site. So we've made the adjustments, um, we've put this timeline in place so that hopefully everything goes through, and you never know with construction, but the July fifteenth is that substantial completion date. That gives us plenty of time, almost a month and a half before the fall season starts. So if there are any issues, we can make adjustments, and that will give us time. So there's been a lot of thought put into this, a lot of planning to make sure that we can accommodate our student athletes as best we possibly can during the construction. But once again, I'd like to thank, you know, our administration, the school committee, and the city, because we are very, very fortunate to have this support. And a lot of schools don't have what we have, and a lot of cities don't have what we have, and we are very, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otavio Nelly. Mrs. Fagan?
Um, I just want to re, um, make a point of clarification here. When I voted no before, it's not about this field, I think this is beautiful, and I'd be the first one to advocate for this because I've enjoyed everything we've done, and I see the big difference it makes with our students. I'm just concerned about getting involved with trying to get rid of stuff to somebody else. That part of it bothers me, it just makes it more difficult for you people that are doing this job to be involved in something like that. It was part of the original thing anyway that it was going to be gone. I know, because I was here when we put in the first turf field, Eddie Texera and I really pushed to have that done, and it was great for its time, but it's gone. And I don't know if I'd want to put that out on somebody else's, is, even though it's a nice thought that maybe we could, I'm not so sure we can. But I, I have a question. All the underpinnings, so to speak, of this field, when we were doing the baseball field, Mr. Otavio Nelly, all that, that grid work that went in, is this the same thing that's going to happen here?
All, everything underneath has already, that's- All, everything underneath has already, that's staying.
That's staying, okay.
And that's already been done. That's what arson had talked about before, about that we got from the city, all the plants. So that is all the underground, the piping, the stone, all of that remains.
That's all staying. Well, you won't really know until you pull it off with this.
It should be. We're not expecting any issues there.
Okay. And I think this looks beautiful. I can't wait to see this done because I know it's been tough. And I was here when we couldn't play on the baseball field years ago. One of my kids was playing. It's kind of tough when you have to go to somebody else's field to play, and you're never at home. There's something somewhat lost. But I truly advocate for this. I'm very supportive of this. It's just, I don't like getting in the weeds with stuff like getting rid of stuff. I think that just compounds an already difficult job for the people that are doing it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay. Mr. Superintendent Cabral, and Mr. George? Mr. George?
Just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Thought it was great as well. I played football and basketball for Taunton High, and I remember we had dirt in the middle during our Thanksgiving games. And yeah, this looks a lot better, and I'm sure our kids will be very excited. In regards to the turf, from what I was hearing, is that the first option would be for people within the city that maybe have a nonprofit, but not that it would necessarily go to one if they weren't able to do it. So I'm hoping that is, you know, an option still.
Thank you. Superintendent Cabral?
So I just want to continue to, you know, to pass my gratitude on to this committee and to the administration for having the foresight and the vision to plan for these type of projects. You know, 14 years ago, when the first turf field went in, a revolving account was established, and there's a hefty balance in that revolving account to help do maintenance and to help in the prepare in anticipation for the replacement of the field. So kudos to the previous committee and to those who are currently serving, who are also assisted with that work. I also want to also express my gratitude as a citizen in this city and also as a superintendent, that this is a burden that we do not pass on to the taxpayers, that this comes out of the revolving account. So we appreciate, I appreciate all the efforts from the city side to make sure we have great buildings. And as a school department, we express our gratitude to the city by making sure we have great facilities for our students and for our citizens to enjoy. So I think I'd be remiss if I didn't use this opportunity. As you can tell, I'm excited about the new turf field and the new track that we're going to be getting next fall. But I'm also very excited and I'm very proud to announce that we have a new principal officially. We have a new principal at Taunton High School. So Mr. Holcomb, please make your way to the podium. I want to introduce Mr. Holcomb as the new principal of Taunton High School. If I could, just real quick, I had, I had been very vocal about my desire to post this position during the sweet spot of the hiring season, which is between December and February. And I quickly realized that Mr. Holcomb, Principal Holcomb, is unlike any other interim principal, because most interims come in and they try not to rock the boat, or they try to keep things status quo. And that's not what you get when you, when you first get to meet Scott or Principal Holcomb. Right from day one, he has been very assertive in his leadership and his vision for Taunton High School. First thing he asked is, where's your strategic plan? He wanted to know the strategic plan and how he can help contribute and carry out that vision. And everything that Scott has done since day one up until this point has checked all the boxes and exceeded my expectations. That's why I am honored and feel privileged to be able to announce Scott as the principal of Taunton High School. So Scott, welcome to the team. Welcome to the family.
Thanks, Superintendent. I appreciate that. I'm glad to be part of such an amazing team that Superintendent has put together. It's really an honor to have that. But I'd be, again, a little bit remiss if I didn't thank people, you know, as much as I might be a boat rocker. I've been called a lot of things in life, but no one ever said I was a boat rocker. So it's a good thing, though, because a lot of good things are happening on Superintendent Cabral's team and team I'm overseeing at the high school. But it's really not just my hands. You know, what has been established there is a, there's a lot of staff that are right behind me, too, making these things happen. You know, the superintendent is but one person that creates a shared vision. I'm but one person that helps to execute that shared vision. So I want to make sure I say thank you, not only to our superintendent, but the team at the high school that's making these things come to fruition under his leadership. So thanks again. I look forward to a really bright future. I'm excited about where we're heading. So again, hopefully I continue to get an A-plus rating, and I hope you, hope you come back and visit all your teachers, and you can still see us growing. Okay? All right. Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Principal Holcomb, and congratulations.
Thank you much.
Okay, if everyone's all set with that, we'll move. Can we get a motion to accept the report? Received?
Aye.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you. Can we take a quick five minutes?
Please.
We'll be in a minute.
Motion to recess and find a principle.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Okay, we're back from our short recess, and now we will go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in my superintendent's report, I provide you, I provided you with the FY23 budget message. So as you are aware, on Wednesday, January 26th, Governor Baker released the FY23, his FY23 budget proposal. The $48.5 billion budget proposal represents a $2.9 billion projected spending increase when compared to FY22. The proposal increases aid to districts, to school districts, from $5.5 billion to $5.9 billion, which is an increase of about 8.8% or $485 million. With an increase of $591 million, the Recommended Student Opportunity Act is fully funded in year two, including $485 million in funding for Chapter 70. The Chapter 70 focus of $485 million has a focus on serving school systems with low-income students. There was also a $41 million increase to help fund Circuit Breaker. Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement tool that helps to reimburse school systems that send students out of district. And I believe we receive about 73% to 75% annually on out-of-district reimbursement tuition. Under the Student Opportunity Act, it establishes new higher foundation budget rates in five areas. Benefits and fixed charges, which continue to be budget breakers, if you ask most business managers and most business officials on municipality side. It provides increases in guidance and psychological services, special education, and out-of-district tuition, English learners, and low-income students. And this will be phased in completely by FY27. There was also increased rates, or it also increased the number of tiers for low income. Originally, there were 10 tiers. There are now 12 tiers. The Taunton Public Schools, because we're about 63% free and reduced lunch, we're in the 10th tier. So there are still two tiers above us. The inflation factor that was applied was the maximum that is allowed by, by the statute, which is 4.5%. Also wanted to point out that we are not at the level of enrollment at the state level or at the district level of where we were pre-pandemic. At the state level, the foundation enrollment decreased from 907,506 to 903,751. So there was about a 3,800 student drop, or just under 0.5 or 0.4%. In the Taunton Public Schools, we saw our foundation enrollment decrease by 13 students. Despite projections of having an increase of over 30 students, we are actually in the process of drilling down to identify why we saw a decrease when we projected an increase of 32 students. The foundation budget, again, the foundation budget, this is the city's required piece, and also the Chapter 70 increase. So the overall foundation budget increased by $11.7 million, which is almost 11%. Since I've been assistant superintendent, superintendent, this is the largest increase we've experienced on the city side, on the school side. It's typically three to four times more than what we typically see. So the foundation budget for FY22 was around $107 million in FY22. For FY23, the foundation budget is just under $119 million. The city's required contribution increased by $1.9 million, or about 5.1%. And the Chapter 70 increase, oh, sorry, the city's required, required contribution increased by $1.9 million from $38 million to $40 million. And for the city, in the form of Chapter 70 aid, we will receive a total of $78,628,388 in the form of aid, which is an increase of $9.3 or $9.7 million. I also provided you with a quick chart. You're probably eager to know or curious to know where we saw the greatest increases. And the greatest increases can be attributed to two categories. And one of the categories, again, this committee played a large role in establishing, which is the Chapter 74 programs. Our Chapter 74 programs of the vocational line, we saw an increase of 54 students. For every student enrolled in the Chapter 74 program, we receive an additional $5,200 in Chapter 70. So that's a substantial increase. And again, we saw that line increase by $1.3 million. Of that $1.3 million, 65% comes in the form of Chapter 70 aid. The largest increase was in low income. In low income, we are in the 10th decile, or the 10th tier, and we saw an increase of 639 students qualify for free and reduced lunch in the city of Taunton. So again, we are at 63% free and reduced lunch, where we, last year at this time, we were at 54%. So that's why you see the substantial increase of $6.5 million. For every student in the 10th decile, or Tier 10, for free and reduced lunch, we receive an additional $5,843 in Chapter 70. So that attributes to the large increase that we, that we are receiving, and we see that the SOA Student Opportunity Act being fully funded in year two, providing communities such as Taunton, DeBefford, Fall River, and Brockton, providing them with the aid to be able to provide all our students with a high-quality education. The preliminary estimates, again, these are preliminary estimates, and these, this could change as the, as the budget makes its way through the House and through the Senate deliberation. However, these estimates are very instrumental in helping our administration work with the city to form, formulate an FY23 budget. So the conversations with the city are ongoing, and I am very optimistic regarding the budget figures that we'll be receiving from the city, and I look forward to presenting those numbers or that data, our budget presentation with Mrs. Moynihan in the very near future before the school committee. Just quick other talking points. I also provided in your packet, I was very pleased to see the Galligan Elementary School was featured in a publication by Bridgewater State University, where our student teachers, working with university professors, they were able to do a book club online versus in person despite the pandemic. So that is in there for your review. I also want to make the public aware that on Saturday, February 5th, the city of Taunton is hosting a COVID test distribution over at Taunton High School from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So again, Saturday, February 5th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, citizens in Taunton can receive free COVID tests, and the city is hoping to distribute, very lofty goal, Mayor O'Connell, 5,000 tests is what they're hoping to distribute. So if anyone in the city requires a free test, please make your way to Taunton High School Saturday, February 5th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also wanted to make the public aware and all our seniors aware at Taunton High School, that the free application for federal student aid, which is the FASSA, the Guidance Department of Taunton High School, they are literally drilling down to each senior who has not completed that application, and will be working with those students to assist them with completing their FASSA forms. We also have partnered with BCC, who will be coming in to provide some support. And in addition to providing support with completing the FASSA forms, BCC will also be providing on-the-spot admission for any Taunton High student or Taunton High graduate, future graduate, to attend BCC in the fall. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Mayor, if I may, I believe a motion would be in order to accept the report and place on file.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you. Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Subcommittee Reports. Finance and Law, Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Mr. D'Amello, and Mr. Enos. Going through the agenda, there were no student activities to replenish this meeting. We had a warrant for bills payable entirely fiscal year 22 in the amount of $1,296,901.76. Mr. D'Amello asked to be recorded his presence on the warrant on the bill for the Guilfoyle Company, which is listed on page 11, and the committee voted to recommend approval of the warrant with the exception from Mr. D'Amello's vote. Then Assistant Superintendent Moynihan gave us an update on several funds as to where they stand at the end of second quarter of fiscal year 22. First line items and categories, Mrs. Moynihan noted that the budget right now has been frozen temporarily so that they can audit where the budget stands at this point and determine what departments may need to slow their spending, where they may need to transfer funds in order to be able to complete the year effectively. Also had a review of revolving accounts. I can say that there are pretty hefty balances in all of them. And also a review of grant spending. And Mr. D'Amello made a motion, seconded by Mr. Enos, that we recommend to the committee that steps be taken toward eventually returning to a full-time grant manager. And then finally, there was a facilities update from Mrs. Moynihan. She said that the doors from the, for the alternative high school project are going to be arriving shortly and be installed immediately upon receipt. And she also issued thanks for the yeoman service that was performed by a number of people on snow removal following this recent storm. Certainly our own grounds crew, our custodians and groundskeepers, but also a great deal of assistance from the city's DPW and Lopes Construction, who is one of the major contractors for, for snow removal. And that's the report of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Is there a motion to adopt and accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. High School Subcommittee, Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's past Wednesday, January 26th. We convened a meeting of the High School Subcommittee, called the meeting to order at 4:05 PM. Participants of the Subcommittee were myself, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Viera. School district members were Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Christopher Barata, Principal Scott Holcomb, Assistant Principal Kristen Keenan, and Guidance Counselor Paul Bachman. In the audience was School Committee Chairperson Gregory D'Amello and one parent whose name we did not get. The topic of the presentation was the proposed high school schedule change. So the introduction was provided. Superintendent Cabral opened the meeting by explaining that the purpose of the meeting was to provide the high school leadership with an opportunity to explain the purpose and rationale for a schedule, proposed schedule revision at the high school with an eye towards building a schedule to fit the needs of a 21st century learner. Mr. Cabral further stated that high school staff members have been engaged in schedule revision discussions for the past four years. However, the work accelerated rapidly beginning this past fall. Today's presentation was to provide an opportunity to learn about their work, and most importantly, provide an opportunity for members of the Subcommittee to ask clarifying questions. Principal Holcomb explained that one aspect of his entry plan was that he was charged with the responsibility of revising and moving towards a new schedule for the upcoming school year, schedule which would improve students' outcome, student outcomes for learning, audit and examine course offerings to maximize staffing, capitalizing on student interest, along with creating a schedule that would improve teacher effectiveness, providing for common planning time. Upon framing the goal of Scheduling Committee, he introduced Mrs. Keenan. Mrs. Keenan framed the PowerPoint presentation by stating clearly all the work that the Revision Committee was a collaborative, collaborative effort by all. She identified the high school leadership team, Guidance Department, curriculum supervisors, central office representative, along with teachers. central office representative, along with teachers. She proceeded, proceeded to provide historical perspective of the schedule at T H S. The block schedule four-by-four has been in existence for over twenty years at the time of its adoption. It's met the needs. Or, time has changed, and, and mu- much has changed since its adoption, and it no longer meets the needs of the students today. Areas of growth that have been cited over the time was student enroll, student enrollment has doubled, number of cla- class selections offered has grown exponentially, and C T E offerings has, has been expanded. As with any schedule, there are successes and challenges. Uh, they cited examples where the current schedule has been beneficial, and highlighted areas of challenges. Furring back to growth areas identified early in the presentation, Mrs. Keenan noted that challenges of supporting access to equitable educational experiences for all students was no longer viable. As a result, we need to change the schedule. Uh, focus of scheduling work at the high school was centered around the high school's vision statement shared with the subcommittee, and supported through the use of multiple data points. Mrs. Keenan then proceeded to explain the process used to construct the proposal. Identify the stakeholders. These groups included high school administrations, central office administrators, curriculum supervisors, guidance department, teachers, statewide system of supports, A B L. consulting, P T U. members, and members of previous scheduling committees. Through these conversations, scheduling priorities were established, at which point Mrs. Keenan introduced Mr. Bachman. And he continued to explain, um, how their priorities were, were embedded within the proposed schedule. Mr. Bachman began his segment on the conversation by affirming his endorsement for the proposed schedule, citing the importance of students having successful first experience at the high school. He began to describe, uh, the proposed eighth-grade academy model. So, the, uh, the, the goal here was to provide teachers, uh, common planning time opportunities, and support curri-, support the, to support the curriculums that have been adopted by the district. Students would have access to eighth-grade honors classes, and this would also hold true for students, students would also be able to continue to take part in world, world languages. One, uh, a, another objective of the proposed new schedule was to, uh, realize lowered class sizes, uh, for all grades. Mr. Bachman, Mrs. Keenan, Mr. Holcomb commented on the ability and need to provide full-year courses which meet mass core requirements established by D A C. dosage requirements for C T E. adva- and advanced placement. A discussion ensued regarding student learning outcomes, and the assumption that full-year classes would better prepare students for state assessments. So, um, all three high school administrators referred back to the propos- proposals citing, um, how that the goal would be to eliminate inequities in opportunity and improve access for all students. Presentation was concluded, and the opportunity, uh, for questioning began. Questions included, um, uh, we wanted to know, will credits associated with honors as it exists in the eighth grade, um, continue? The answer, that was yes. Uh, credit-bearing courses, honors courses, world languages will, will remain intact. Is it, is the intent desire to implement the new schedule for the fall of twenty-twenty? The answer to that was yes. So what, uh, what metrics will be used to determine the effectiveness of the new schedule? Uh, can we develop a pre-post implementation plan? If so, what data would we collect? The answer would be, uh, they would look at things limited but not including to discipline data, attendance data, and assessment results. Um, at the conclusion of the questions, Mrs. Fagan made a motion to accept the report of the high school administration and invite the high school team to present, uh, an executive committee, uh, to the, uh, full school committee at the, um, February sixteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-two meeting. The motion was seconded by Mr. Viera, and the vote passed three to zero. Um, at which point, Mrs. Fagan made the motion to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mr. Viera, vote three to zero, and the meeting was adjourned at five fifty-seven P M. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski.
I'm going to accept the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Fagan and Chairman DeMello.
I just want to, uh...
Could I just make a comment real quick before Mrs. Fagan goes?
Yeah.
I would just caution the board careful on the questions that are asked, because this will be an item that is bargained. So depending on what we, what is asked, we may or may not be able to provide an answer, because this is something that we will need to bargain. So just to be, make everybody aware.
Well, I just wanted to let the committee know, I wish all of you had been there that night. That was the, one of the best presentations I've ever seen in this school department about what it was they were looking to do at the high school, and the realization that somewhere along the line, this kind of fell out of favor with the, the teachers, students, everybody, this whole thing that was going on at the high school. And they certainly presented a way that I think is going to make it a lot better for kids, if we can enact what we want to do. And it's concerning the block scheduling, which, in case that didn't quite, it's very difficult to run that, and as a result, as, as Nate was explaining, all these classes kept going up because they're trying to provide stuff, but some of the classes got really big, some stayed small, and this seems to be a better way to be doing things. But I've gotta give, give my hats off to the high school people that went out and looked at other schools, looked to see what they were doing, and realizing that this was a problem for us before all the COVID stuff, that the, the scores were starting to go a little south. So I, I was, I went home, and my husband said, I didn't expect you to be this late. And I said, that was one of the best meetings I ever attended, because it was very, very enlightening. And I just really felt that if we can get this to, to go through, if we can work on this, we'll, we'll be probably doing something that's really, really good for all of our students, not just a few of them, for all of them. So I was very happy when I got home, and I know you were too, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. DeMello.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Two, two quick comments. Yeah, there was a lot of energy in the room that night, and, uh, I'll tell you, everybody that was presenting, uh, was full of energy and excited, and it was one, like Mrs. Fagan just said, was one of the nicest subcommittee meetings I've attended. But Mayor, I, I believe I'd like to expand on, on the maker of the motion. Who was the maker of the motion to accept this? Just to Enos. I think we should expand that motion, uh, to accept the report and have the administration present the proposed Taunton High School schedule on Wednesday, February sixteenth, in executive session on a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Palowski, all set?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan, votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lura?
Yes.
And Chairman DeMello?
Yes.
Thank you. New business. Superintendent Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So part of our strategic plan, I believe it's item number four on the bottom right-hand side of our strategic plan. One of our goals is community outreach and partnerships. And when I began as superintendent four years ago, one of the first community partners that I formed a great relationship with and continue to have a great relationship with is Manette Health. So when Manette Health and Cynthia Sierra contacted me about bringing student-based health centers back to Taunton, it was a no-brainer. And I know the conversations that I've had with many of the school board members, there's a tremendous amount of support, and, uh, as well as an identified need to have a high-quality student-based health center centrally located in our school department. So I'm very proud and honored to ask, uh, to have Cynthia Sierra, the CFO, I believe, or CEO, Chief, Chief Executive Officer, Officer of Manette Health, with us this evening to discuss a planning grant. Again, uh, again, I just want to thank you for all your help in being a tremendous partner with the Welcome Center, as well as your support during these difficult times with COVID. And, uh, I look forward to this potential partnership, uh, under your leadership, working with my administration. Thank you.
Is, is the mic on, Mrs. Sierra?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I also wanted to acknowledge our Board of Director member, Anne Basson. That's a good friend, um, to the health center, to the city of Taunton, and Anne is a very proud graduate of Taunton High School. So really pleased to be here again, Cynthia Sierra, uh, the honor and privilege of serving as the Chief Executive Officer of Manette. As Superintendent Cabral mentioned, and thank you for the friendship and the partnership, and appreciative to, uh, to be working, uh, with your leadership. Uh, Manette i- is, uh, a, a community health center that started actually in nineteen-seventy-nine. Um, and Manette is Latin for it remains, and we certainly have remained. We've remained, and we've grown. We have three locations in Quincy, in Hull. We also opened recently this summer in Attleboro. But most important this evening, we arrived in Taunton, and so proud to do so in twenty-fourteen, and the embrace of the city, um, and its leadership. We're located at one Washington Street in Mill River Plaza, and we started with three exam rooms. We've grown to seventeen exam rooms, um, in meeting the demand, uh, um, the pent-up demand in some cases. We provide primary care, we provide it six days a week, but we provide it Saturdays, and we provide it evenings. We also provide integrated behavioral health care. So we have on staff physicians and physician assistants and nurse practitioners, L I C S W. psychiatric nurse practitioners, recovery coaches and health workers, and more. And, uh, we exist to be able to provide accessible quality health care for all, uh, with an emphasis on, um, communities most vulnerable that need us the most. And in COVID, it's been our pleasure and our honor, frankly, to be able to partner with the city of, uh, Taunton. School-based health centers, I come here with the encouragement of, um, Stuart, uh, Stuart Morton, and, uh, and, uh, their support for, uh, Manette exploring this, uh, next generation, if you will, of a school-based health center, to be as Superintendent Cabral conveyed, located in a centrally, um, accessible location. This is at a State Department of Public Health grant. I should also share that Manette is joint commission accredited. We're also fully licensed by the State Department of, um, healthcare facilities and quality. And, um, the opportunity exists not just for existing school-based health centers that agri-, exist, uh, and operate across the Commonwealth, uh, but also for new applicants, uh, such as Manette, to prospectively open in partnership, and only in partnership with the school district and the community of school-based health center. That would mirror the hours and the season of the school, and would provide, if you will, what's called by the State Department of, um, uh, Public Health for priority districts, such as the city of Taunton, uh, primary care plus. So we would bring, um, if you will, um, employed by Manette, um, a primary care provider. Again, that would be in your school. Also, a licensed master's level behavioral health clinician, and then also what's called a community health worker that would work on access, outreach, and care coordination. So it would be a team of three professionals, um, that would be here to serve, provide primary care, again, health screenings, health assessments. Uh, it was a pleasure to, to, to hear about, um, not just your, your new Taunton High principal, but your athletic grounds and fields. And, and, and yes, school-based health centers provide, um, new student physicals, vaccination care, immunization care, but also athletic physicals as well. Um, and as Superintendent Cabral mentioned, there's a time sensitivity to this, and that our application, Manette's application, would be due February eleventh. Awards would be made, um, in the spring of this year. Uh, the grant year would start July first. The component about being a new applicant, if you will, if we were so, so fortunate to be awarded, we would have a year to plan together what that program of work would look like, the recruitment, of course, on, on Manette's and for our clinical team, but also the placement, importantly, of where the school-based health center would be. Um, so i- in a snapshot, the opportunity, and, and Superintendent Cabral, um, appreciative for, uh, for this chance to, to begin to have this conversation, that we hope would, um, lead us to a pathway of support to be able to apply. Um, and again, the health center is, is eager and hopeful to be able to apply, uh, to take this, um, this opportunity to hopefully create this access point for your students, um, and to make sure that, um, we're doing our part as a community health center, and a federally qualified community health center, to make sure that we're supporting, um, your students' healthcare needs, behavioral healthcare needs, and, uh, with the interest in the end of improving academic performance, and also improving the attendance of your, of your students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra. Do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Laura?
Just to Manette itself, having been to many of your meetings, along with the superintendent and other people throughout the community, you do tremendous work for our community.
Oh, thank you.
You've established yourself in a way that you are, you deliver what you say you're going to do, but I'm quite proud to work along with you with that.
Thank you so much. Honored, honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms., oh, Mr. Palowski.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you very much for the great presentation and all the work that you do. Uh, my question is, wh- which school would, would it be located in?
Yes, please, Superintendent.
Yep. So we have, really haven't identified a school yet, Mr. Palowski, but we have a general idea, uh, between Taunton High, Parker, and E. Pole. Half our school system is right here on William Street. So part of the planning and part of the motion that I hope, uh, comes out tonight is to refer this to long-range planning, so that we can explore a central location here on William Street, whether it's Pole, Parker, or the high school, somewhere where, you know, thirty-seven hundred, thirty-eight hundred of our students and their families would have access to high-quality healthcare.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Um, so will the community health center have outpatient clinicians that also see students as well?
Yes, appreciate the question, yes. So our, our providers that would be located in a school-based health center are board-certified, uh, pediatricians, uh, and/or family medicine practitioners, and, um, and yes, it would be an outpatient model, absolutely, yes, with same-day service as well. So urgent care visits, uh, an illness or an event comes up during the course of the day, um, in partnership with your, um, school nurses, your school guidance and adjustment counselors, that's where, um, the support of a licensed independent clinical social worker, or licensed mental health counselor would come in as well.
Would this program also be able to do, like, crisis evaluations if a student was having?
So you raise, you raise a wonderful point. In terms of, um, the emergency services program, twenty-four-hour response, uh, we want to recognize, uh, community counseling of Bristol County, um, and a wonderful partner. But in terms of, in the day-to-day hours of school operation, uh, absolutely, our behavioral health clinician would be able to respond, um, to students in distress in that day, and of course, do that in a collegial way, um, with, um, the, the, the behavioral health and the guidance faculty that are here presently.
Working as a schools' adjustment counselor, I think that sounds amazing, because a lot of times we put the referrals out, and we have to frequently follow up with as busy as the school days are, and a lot of times it's waiting lists, so to have that kind of in-house would be great.
Thank you, absolutely. We agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. And we, we certainly appreciate all the collaboration that Manette does in our community on many different initiatives, uh, with the city, with, uh, Morton Hospital, with the school, and having access right here at our schools for our kids and families will be a great benefit. The, the more access we have to physical and mental healthcare, the better for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Ms. Sierra getting back to me on a Sunday night, uh, on an email response, uh, that, that proves your commitment to the community. Thank you so much. If, if my colleagues are in agreement, a motion would be in order to authorize the superintendent of schools to write a letter of support on behalf of the school committee, and to refer the matter to the long-range planning.
Move that motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sierra.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. Thank you for welcoming us.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished. Oh, thank you. I keep skipping over. Thank you for...
That's okay. There's a lot to digest. Uh, Mayor, thank you so much. So on new business, this was brought up by, uh, Mr. Fiore, Subcommittee of Finance and Law, which I am a member. Uh, I think that I, I'd like the, uh, the wheels to start spinning on that grant administrator position, whatever you want to call it, to incorporate into the next budget, so we could have some true numbers. I mean, there's going to be some comparisons made, uh, because I think we want to expand this, uh, to be a little bit more diversified than simply a grant manager. So, uh, if we could set that to the, uh, agenda of, uh, February sixteen, maybe Superintendent, March second, or whatever you're thinking. Okay, great. And that's all I have for new business.
Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business. Any action review items? Mr. DeMello?
Yes, Mayor. I will re-, uh, defer to Superintendent Cabral. I will defer to Superintendent Cabral as he has some updates also. My only concern is the item regarding the procurement card, and I think I'd like to address this maybe on the February 16th agenda. I know that the city has been working with Superintendent Cabral, but we do have a CFO in place now, correct?
We do.
So that's good news. So we could probably move that forward to the next meeting for an update of where we stand with that, if that's okay with everybody? That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Now, I'll just give a quick update on the first item. The first item, I believe, is still going to be placed on hold, but we may see some relief to the first item regarding the potential change to the high school schedule, with potential changes to the high school schedule that may free up space for the... Sorry, my glasses are starting to go. That may free up space for the Air Force ROTC to have practice time in the gym, and they also may provide some relief for the band. So again, we'll keep that on hold and we'll see what happens or where we go or where we end up with the proposed high school change. On item, the third item regarding the internet and network acceptable use policy, I'm still waiting for some feedback on that to share with the rule subcommittee. So as soon as we get that feedback, I will bring it to the committee and then we can schedule a rule subcommittee. And then I would ask, since long-range planning, there was a motion made tonight to refer the student-based health center to long-range planning. I would also say that we refer the long-range, to the long-range planning committee and school property subcommittee, the food service composite materials feasibility analysis. Maybe we add that to the agenda, invite Karen Papa to the meeting and have her give an update on the work she's done in the past and maybe put together a timeline on where we go.
Okay. Mr. Palowski, do you have something?
I just, do we need a motion for that to be referred? Okay. I move that we refer to the long-range planning and school property subcommittee, the food services composite material feasibility analysis.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Okay, there is no press here this evening. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you.